Good evening, Farmington Hills. Welcome to our regularly scheduled city council meeting for Monday, May 9, 2022. We will begin with the call to order, which we just did. And now we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the roll call.
Mayor Barnett?
Here.
Council members Boloware?
Here.
Bridges?
Here.
Bruce?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Massey?
Present.
And Newland?
Here.
Thank you.
Next item is approval of the regular session meeting agenda. Is there a motion? Dr. Massey?
Madam Mayor, I would move approval of the agenda as published.
Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Dr. Massey, seconded by Dr. Bruce. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Regular vote.
Regular vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we have our agenda set. Next is proclamation recognizing May 15 through 21 as National Public Works Week. Mr. Bridges, would you like to read that one?
I would.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas proclamation recognizing National Public Works Week, Ready and Resilient. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and successful communities such as the city of Farmington Hills. And whereas National Public Works Week recognized the men and women who provide and maintain the services collectively known as public works, which are an integral part of the health, safety, high quality of life and well-being in the everyday lives of Farmington Hills residents. Whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works systems and programs such as water supply, sanitary sewers, roadways, public buildings and properties, signage, traffic control, solid waste collection, and recycling. Whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community all depend upon the effectiveness of public works programs and the vital contribution and daily service of the dedicated and hard-working professionals in the city's public services department and the Division of Public Works. And whereas this year's theme, Ready and Resilient, showcases the superheroes that lie within each and every public works professional, always ready to serve their communities and resilient as ever in their abilities to pick themselves up and rise to the occasion after encountering challenges. And whereas National Public Works Week was instituted by the American Public Works Association as a public education campaign designed to call attention to the importance of public works in the lives of present and future generations. Now therefore be it resolved that Vicky Barnett, the mayor of the city of Farmington Hills, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim May 15 through 21 of 2022 as National Public Works Week in the city of Farmington Hills, and call upon all citizens to recognize and acknowledge the vital services provided daily by the city's public works professionals to maintain the high quality of life in Farmington Hills.
Okay, and we have apparently Kevin McCarthy here to receive the proclamation, which I do not have hard copy of.
Should be at your place with the paper on it.
I've got there.
Nope.
Over.
Oh, take care, thank you.
Oh, the mayor pro tem has them.
Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank you as council and the citizens of Farmington Hills for, on behalf of all 33 of the employees out of the public works. And you've provided us a whole bunch of moral support, a whole bunch of financial support. We have some of the best vehicles and equipment in the whole area, the region. Our facility is fabulous, and that all makes for an easy day when you have reliable equipment, and particularly, we know you all have our back. So we want to thank you for all you do for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Kevin is soon to retire, and we're going to miss him very, very much. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation recognizing May 15 through 21, 2022 as National Police Week. Dr. Massey, would you like to read this one?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. Proud to do it. Proclamation recognizing National Police Week, May 15 through 21, 2022. Whereas Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week. And whereas National Police Week honors all law enforcement officers, and Peace Officers Memorial Day pays homage to those who made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or became disabled in the performance of duty, and also pays tribute to the survivors of these fallen heroes. And whereas we honor the men and women of the Farmington Hills Police Department along with their community partners, and commend them on their impressive accomplishments in reducing crime in our community. And whereas the Farmington Hills Police Department achieved re-accreditation from the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police, becoming one of only eight Michigan police agencies to have attained this status and currently the largest agency to achieve the prestigious accomplishment. And whereas it is vital to our citizens, is vital that our citizens know that Farmington Hills police officers are committed to practicing 21st century policing, encouraging positive community connections, and delivering superior services without prejudice or partiality. And whereas we are grateful to the members of our police department and to the community whose partnership helps Farmington Hills continue to be rated as one of the safest communities to live in the state and country each year. Now therefore be it resolved that Vicky Barnett, the mayor of the city of Farmington Hills, on behalf of the city council, does hereby proclaim May 15 through 21, 2022 as National Police Week, and calls upon the citizens of Farmington Hills to join in recognizing our Farmington Hills police officers, dispatchers, and civilian support staff, and in honoring all the dedicated professional law enforcement personnel across our country who preserve the safety and security of our communities.
Thank you very much.
Certainly.
And we have, is it Shuley or Schooly?
Schooly.
Schooly. Officer Schooly from the Police Officers Association of Michigan Vice President. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And on behalf of all of us, we want to thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd just like to just say a few words. I'm Officer Kent Schooly with Farmington Hills Police Department, and I've been working here for 24 years with the city in July. It has been my privilege to work for this police department, a very professional police department, and we've, I think, created an environment that is very good to our public, to the citizens of Farmington Hills, and hopefully they're very happy with the product that they have in front of them when they are dealing with us. So to the mayor, to the city council, thank you very much for this proclamation and taking recognition of those who have lost their lives in the line of duty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's been a particularly rough few years for police officers across the country and first responders as well, and we want to thank you for diligently protecting our residents and our business owners and for all the hard work that you do. It's been quite difficult, and to the residents, we know it's been kind of difficult on all you too, so it's nice to see so many fresh faces in the city council. Next item is correspondence. Does anybody have any correspondence that we all didn't receive? Nope. I did receive a few emails regarding the construction on Orchard Lake and Farmington Road, and I know that we have some items on our website addressing that. And I also want to let everybody know that we also are doing a master plan review, and if you would like to talk about our master plan at all, if you go to FHGOV.com, which is our city website, there's a sticky button, that's what they call it, on the front page and on master plan input, and you can be free to put your comments in, and we'd love to hear from you about how you see the city developing and what you'd like to see done with our master plan. Next is the consent agenda. This will be read by the mayor pro tem. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine by city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the items may be removed from the consent agenda for consideration. And if you have any comments you would like to make on any item on the consent agenda, please fill out a blue form at the back of the room. They look like this. And to all the people who want to speak during public question and comments, you didn't need to fill these out, but we're glad that you did, so we can call on you. Thank you very much. Okay, take it away, Mayor Pro Tem Newland.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent agenda is published this evening. Number nine, recommend approval of a special event permit for the 11th Annual Supriato Classic 5K Race to be held on Friday, June 10, 2022. Number 10, recommend approval of a request for employment under Section 10.018 of the City Charter for a camp leader and hawk's nest leader. Number 11, recommend approval of the city council study session meeting minutes of April 25, 2022. Number 12, recommend approval of the city council regular session meeting minutes of April 25, 2022. And number 13, recommend approval of the city council special meeting minutes of April 27, 2022.
Motion, Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Bridges.
Yes, I move that council approve the following consent agenda items as read by the mayor pro tem. Item number nine through 12, approved.
Support. Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Bridges, seconded by Ms. Boloware. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Council members Bruce?
Yes.
Boloware?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Newland?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett?
Yes. And that leaves item 13.
Sure.
Yes, Councilmember?
I'll make a motion to approve item 13 as read by the mayor pro tem.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Noel, seconded by Councilmember Boloware. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Councilmembers Boloware?
Yes.
Bridges?
Abstain.
Newland?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Okay. Now we will have public questions and comments, and please limit your comments to about five minutes. I know that all of you are here on the same subject, I believe, most of you. And so if you'd like to come up as a group and give your presentation, that would be great, or if you want me to call you up one at a time? Okay. Okay, so then I'll just call Jenny Pike? Okay.
My name's Jenny Pike, and I did send a letter to, I brought a letter for all of you, and I hope you all received it. We just had a really nice update by the city manager before the meeting, so I have a lot more information than when I wrote the letter. But I guess I just want to go on record and just say again how much all of us use and enjoy the caustic center, and we're hoping that the master plan will either include the caustic center or something similar to it. All of the people there are swimmers, and we're just a little group of the people that use that building. There'd be more people here, but it's past our bedtime, so. But we really do enjoy it, and I had to go back to the building later in the day. I usually go at 6:30 every day, and I had to go back later in the day to pick up some paperwork, and there were 50 or 60 cars in the parking lot. I was amazed. I didn't, I'm only there first thing in the morning, so I didn't realize so many people used it. But it's a well-used, well-loved building. We know it's old. We love it, warts and all, and we just either need it or something very similar to it. So we're hoping that you'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Next is Pamela Santo.
Hello, my name is Pamela Santo. I've lived in Farmington Township for 70 years. My father worked with the police department, retired as lieutenant here in Farmington Hills. I've enjoyed Farmington Hills. It's historic, has a lot to offer. It's wonderful. Botzford Inn, all the good stuff. I am to the point in my life, at the age of 78, to say, you're old. It's like nobody cares. The caustic center means a lot to all of us. That's what keeps me alive, keeps a lot of the ladies alive. It's like a membership, a sisterhood. It's wonderful. And I have two artificial hips, two artificial knees, had lower back surgery, and if it wasn't for the water and the professional doctors to tell me, get into the pool, get into some type of an exercise, I've been going now for 15 years, and I love it. My body loves it. I can go, move, do, golf, whatever. But take it away from us, and I know the city's put a lot of money into the Hawk. My daughters graduated from Harrison High. They didn't include the seniors over there. You can't exercise in water up to your waist. The temperature of the water's a lot cooler. It's geared toward the younger people, and yet our tax dollars support that. So with the caustic center saying it's old, improve it, because it's not going to go downhill. We have people coming up that will be going to that caustic center. It's offered a lot, it's made a lot of people survive, and I appreciate it, and I know all the people here appreciate it. So anytime you want to come over and join us to water aerobics, you're all welcome, because your body's going to love it. Please save it for us, and God bless all of yous.
What time is water aerobics?
10 to 11, but they have open swim, they have everything there.
So glad you didn't say 6:30 in the morning.
No, it's wonderful, and our instructors are fabulous. So please come and join us, and I'll tell you what, your aches and pains will go away.
Thank you.
I promise you.
Thank you. Next is Linda Bodzen.
My name is Linda Bodzen. Thank you for giving us the opportunity. We all learned about this a little bit this morning. So you can just see a few of us that are there, but there were probably at least 40 to 50 men and women that were swimming with us today, whether we were doing aerobics, maybe we were doing laps, maybe we were just doing our own thing in the pool, but we are there. I go there personally about three to four times a week. Probably my whole entire life, I've never found an exercise like swimming and aerobics in the pool that I've enjoyed like this. I've been there for 10 years. I've lived in Farmington Hills for 40 years now. I supported everything, my kids are graduates of all the Farmington Hills schools, excuse me, whenever a millage came up, I supported that because I wanted the best for my community. I'm at the point now that I want something for me, and the caustic center is something that is for me. I get up every morning, 8 o'clock, I'm gone, I'm out of the house. Nothing stops me, because I want to be in the pool with my friends. It's also a social kind of thing. During the pandemic, some of us would come with our masks, but we were there and we were supporting each other. And so I really hope that this is not something that can be taken away. In many respects, I think the community that Farmington Hills made a promise to seniors. When the Hawk was proposed, in your sustainability, in one of the budgets that you put in, one of the master plans, there is a paragraph that talks about the Hawk being purchased in 2019 and to become the Farmington Community Center. But there's also a line that talks about the caustic center, that the caustic center is going to be there and the programming is going to be expanded for seniors. I hope that you will keep that promise, because we need it. It's really important. For me personally, I know I'm so much better. I know my medical tests from my doctors, each year they get better and they get better and they get better, and I'm pleased. And I go next week, and I'm sure that she's going to say the same thing, wow, you're doing great. I had an injury to my hamstring last year, and if any of you have ever had a hamstring injury, you know that that really will curtail what you can do. When I went in there to be evaluated, the doctor looked at me and said, you've got about three to four hard months that you're really not going to be able to do much. Within six weeks of PT, I was fine, and I was back in the pool and I was doing everything. My story is just one story. You can look at so many. Last week, we had a gal that turned 80. She's been at the caustic center for 30 years, and a lot of people have been there. You hear 10, 15, 20 years. And so such a meaningful place. I appreciate you hearing from me, but I know that there's many stories out there, and I hope that you will continue to support the caustic center. Thank you very much.
Jean Bissans? Bissans, okay.
Hi.
Hi.
I can't say much more than what's already been said. I'm just, I'm a water aerobics instructor at the caustic center, and I've taught in many different places. I've taught at the Y. I used to live in Rhode Island, I taught in Rhode Island. I think this is, the caustic center is probably one of the best-cut success stories of Farmington Hills that we have. And when you look at your operational budgets and all that that you have to do, I understand that's your jobs, you need to remember the value added from people that use this to, like they said, it's both social, physical, it's vital for these people. And, you know, it's so well-established, such a successful community there. People have been there for over a quarter of a century. I've never seen this. In all the years I've taught, I've never seen such a well-established program. And there are a lot of things that go wrong with the building and all that, but the women keep coming, they're positive, they're happy. You should join us sometime. So thank you very much for hearing us.
Thank you. Anyone else during public question and comments wants to come up? Okay, I do want to say something. I really appreciate the letter that you sent and the signatures that you gathered. Shows a lot of work. As you heard from our city manager prior, and he can fill the public in in just a minute, we're really grateful for your comments. We know it's old. It needs a lot of refurbishing, and that costs a lot of money. But that doesn't diminish the love we have for the caustic center. My mother is a bridge player, she misses going there for playing bridge. Aldo Vagnosi, one of our first directly elected mayors, used to come to the water aerobics there, and every time I walk in the building, I have a very warm feeling, and it is different from the Hawk. The parking is accessible, it's close to the building, there's no steps to get into the building. It makes a really big difference that it's pretty much barrier-free to allow you to go in, and whether you have a walker or a cane or are physically fit and can just kind of walk in whenever you want to. My only complaint is that the temperature in the building is generally a little higher than I like, but other than that, it's really nice. And we're going to do everything we can to make sure that our seniors have a place to call home. And as somebody who's 67 going on 68 myself, and I've been here for 40 years as well, I agree with every one of your comments, and I'm so glad that you came forward, and thank you very much. Now, Mr. Mekchand, do you want to recap anything that?
Sure, sure. I mean, you know, just for the public that's listening, so the other part of this discussion is that the city, the city of Farmington Hills is currently engaged with a nationally-recognized consultant to essentially do a full-blown management study on our special services department, and that ranges everything from operations to facilities used to programming, opportunities for public-private partnerships, revenue, profit-loss, all that stuff. And we just started with council, the last council meeting, the consultant was in to meet with staff and with city council to garner its input. And throughout this process, over the next six to eight months, our consultant will be having opportunities for stakeholders to provide input from their perspective, just like you're hearing tonight. And so we welcome those comments. Thank you very much to the group for coming in, and we understand the caustic center is important, and we know we have a lot of important programming there, and we know we have a lot of important facility assets within that building that are important to our community, and certainly want to try our very best to continue that, replicate it, whatever it is, and improve upon it. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Glad people like our caustic center. It always makes me feel good when they like our city assets that we provide. Next item is council member comments and announcements. Anyone? Yes.
I don't have an announcement, but I have a comment. As a user of the caustic, and for years, a member who would come in daily and use the water there for water aerobics, it is a great facility for those who are, you know, 50 and up, and also for young children who need swimming lessons. There were a lot of individuals who had physical challenges, and they were able to use a caustic center, and it's a very important part. If you're a member of that swim activity, it's like a family. And I remember when I was going before I quit to go to Bikram Yoga, in which, with Jeanine, it was just such a family feeling. I think that everyone on the council heard what you had to say and appreciate you coming before council tonight to express your opinion and to tell us how important that facility is to you. It is a great facility. It's old, outdated, and more than likely, I know it could use some refurbishing, because the locker rooms are old, the pool is old, just everything is about that, it's old, just like we are. But that does not diminish our value, the value of that to us. And so I appreciate you coming before council to let us know how you feel, and I support you and your efforts.
Anyone else? I would like to just remind everybody that the weather is warm, kids are out riding their bikes, adults are riding bikes. Please be very cognizant when you drive, that you watch out for little kids, little animals, and families and bikers that are on the road, and make sure that you have your, you drive at the speed limit, and please, 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 don't exceed 25 miles an hour inside of a subdivision. If you hit anybody or anyone, you will never forgive yourself. So let's keep everybody safe this summer and enjoy the fact that we can all start getting back together a little more normal than it's been for the past few years. Next is the city manager update.
Hi, good evening, council. Just have a few things for this evening. So on Saturday, May 21, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., help sustain the city's natural resources and restore the Rouge River watershed by participating in Rouge River Day at Heritage Park. Volunteers will clear debris, remove invasive species, and help with wildflower planting. Volunteer check-in is promptly at 9:00 a.m. at the nature center at Heritage Park. If you have any questions, feel free to give the city manager's office a call at 248-871-2500. The Groves Walker American Legion Post, 346, in conjunction with the Zemplar Club of Farmington Farmington Hills, are proud to once again sponsor the Farmington Hills Memorial Day Parade. The parade will take place at 10:00 a.m. on Monday, May 30, and will be on Grand River Avenue between Orchard Lake Road and downtown Farmington. And the event ends with a ceremony at Memorial Park on Grand River and Oakland Streets. And for more information, residents can go to www.memorialdayparade.us/. Just want to remind everybody that the one-year anniversary party for the Hawk and Facility dedication is scheduled for June 16 from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. So we'll have a plaque and dedication for that. And lastly, but certainly not least, I received a great letter today from the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks, and I wish she was here tonight, but I didn't catch her in time, that our deputy clerk, Carly Lindahl, has obtained a Level 2 MYPMC certification.
Michigan Professional Municipal Clerk.
So this is a huge accomplishment for Carly and her professional development, and also speaks volumes about our city council's support. also speaks volumes about our city council's support of professional development within our organization. I just wanted to say congratulations to Carly. We appreciate her hard work. And to thank you, council, for supporting our, our employee development program. So thank you.
Thank you. Next is unfinished business, item number four, consideration of approval of the enactment of ordinance C-2-2022 to amend the city code, Chapter 34 zoning, amending the definition of family, adding new definitions for reasonable accommodation and special accommodation residents, add a new section 34-4.60, standards and regulations for special accommodations use, and approval of summary for publications. This was introduced two weeks ago, and we passed the introduction. And so this is what we call second and final reading to make the ordinance, in fact, an ordinance. And is there any, Mr. Joppik, do you want to?
Oh, okay. Hello, Charmaine.
Good evening. I am, for those at home, Charmaine Kettler-Schmaltz, the interim director of planning and community development. I'm going to keep it brief. You guys have already seen this ordinance once before, as the mayor mentioned. So this is the amendment to the city code definition of family. The public hearing was held just two weeks ago this evening. And there were no comments at that time. The ordinance has not changed, and it's back before you for enactment.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Is there a motion? Dr. Massey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move approval of the enactment of ordinance C-2-2022 to amend city code, Chapter 34 zoning, amending the definition of family, add new definitions for reasonable accommodation and special accommodation residents, and add a new section 34-4.60, standard and regulations for special accommodation use, and approval of summary for publication.
Is there a second?
Sure, support.
Okay, it's been moved by Dr. Massey, seconded by Councilmember Knoll. Is there any discussion? Seeing none?
Roll call vote.
This is a roll call vote. Councilmembers Bridges?
Yes.
Newland?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Bullaware?
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is new business, consideration of approval of appointments to the Farmington Area Arts Commission.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would move that we appoint Mr. Don Fritz for an unexpired term to the Farmington Area Arts Commission, the term to end on 1 February 2025. And also for the Farmington Area Arts Commission, Nora Mason, again, for an unexpired term to end on 1 February 2024. Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Massey, seconded by Councilmember Bridges. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, they've been appointed unanimously. Thank you very much. Next is item number six, consideration of approval of amendment to the planned unit development, PUD 5, the 1993 agreement. And we have Ms. Keltor Schmaltz again.
Yep, I'm back. I am also going to keep this one fairly brief, but if you want additional information, or if you have anything that's needing explained, let me know. So tonight we have the consideration of the amendment to PUD 5 on 1993. This was originally a PUD for NBD Bank, their national headquarters. That development did not go into fruition. So the property was acquired by the Kojain Company. Representative from their company is present tonight. So if you had any questions that you wanted to address specifically, they do have Mr. Tony Anton here. The original PUD only allowed for office use on the properties. The amendment was brought in in order to address the request to expand to allow retail and restaurants over a portion of the development. The site plans and the amendment were reviewed by planning commission and city council previously, and those plans were approved. The amendment before you tonight has been vetted by our attorney's office and is back for consideration before city council.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, Mike?
Questions for the opponent, if I could?
Okay.
I never met a person from Kojain. This is the first time. So I appreciate you coming to council. That property there, it's been there for a long time, and appreciate your interest in redeveloping that property there. So it's great to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well. We've had a wonderful development experience here in Farmington Hills from decades long. So we're, we love developing here.
Excellent. You got a couple of things going there, Cuny and Lamp there, and a couple of other things going there. And so looking at some retail and restaurants.
This is a way to, as we, as we, as I presented in the first time we were here, I think back in December, January, this is a way for us to really help the office market come back.
Oh, really?
A lot of our office tenants are now coming back into the offices. We're up to about 60% now back in, which is great. And more are scheduled to come as the summer months progress. But the biggest thing that, that they tell us is amenities, amenities, amenities. They want things for their people to go and do at lunch and breakfast and those sorts of things. And so these small little retail facilities, we think will go a long way for the overall park and beyond the park, you know, for this area in Farmington Hills. This is our very first amendment to this PUD. It's, it's interesting. When we first took it over, I thought there'd be 10 amendments. And as we started just going through it, I was here from the beginning, and it worked out well, you know, one company after another. And now we've got some exciting things that are coming to Farmington Hills.
Well, that's terrific news, and a pleasure, it's a pleasure to meet you. And have you had any conversation with the other commercial owners there, property office buildings over there, 12 mile road between Drake and Halsted?
In, in, in our park, yes. In our park, they love it. They're excited for this. We're excited to bring this amenity to the park. We also just recently bought the, the old, the former Sengage Building at 12 Mile and Drake. So we purchased that, and we're redeveloping it. And we hope to have some new tenants for that building as well. So a lot of exciting things.
Well, we want to thank you for your presence here tonight. And we appreciate your interest in Farmington Hills. And we want to rah rah and purge you on.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Appreciate that.
Great. Almost 30 years. First change. Okay, we like what you're doing over there.
Thanks.
Is there a motion? Ms. Knoll?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the planned unit development 5, the 1993 agreement.
It's been moved by Councilmember Knoll, seconded by Councilmember Bridges. Is there any, any other questions, discussion? Seeing none? This is a?
Regular vote.
Regular vote?
Yes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
And, and just go down a little further on the other side of, of Drake Road and Halsted, where we've got that empty spot over there with former retail?
We'll keep our eyes on it.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate you.
Next item on the agenda is number seven, consideration of approval of submission of Southeast Michigan Council of Government, SEMCOG, Planning Assistance Program Application for Complete Streets and Corridor Safety Planning, CMR 5-22-51.
Hello again. This is your night. Been with you all day.
You thought, you thought we saw enough of each other two weeks ago. Well, I'm back again. I have before you this evening a request in order to move forward an application for grant funding from SEMCOG for the completion of a complete streets and corridor safety planning. As was mentioned earlier this evening, this is going to be part of the master plan process that we're currently going through. So it's tremendous timing in order to be able to make this application within the timeframe that we're already working on getting our master plans together. So the budget that was put together in order to do the costs and the cost share for the city, so the grant requires an 18.15%. Who came up with that number? I don't know. With a maximum grant request of 50,000, this office is recommending, the city requests 30,448.20 cents, with a local match of 6,751.80 cents for the total for that item that was budgeted out for us by our consultants. So these are funds that would offset what we were already hoping to accomplish as a portion of our master plan request. The grant application is due at the end of this month, May 27th, and we're just looking for authorization to move forward with that.
Okay. Any questions? Is there a motion? Dr. Bruce?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move the approval of submission of Southeast Michigan Council of Government, SEMCOG, Planning Assistance Program Application for Complete Streets and Corridor Safety Planning, CMR 5-22-51.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Bruce, seconded by Councilmember Bullaware. Is there any discussion? Questions? Seeing none? We always like to save money. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, it passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item number eight, consideration of approval of the introduction of an ordinance to amend the Farmington Hills Code Ordinance at Chapter 8, Business Licensing, Article 2, Smoking Lounges, to establish a special permit for hookah smoking areas in smoking lounges, and to amend provisions relating to the purpose and intent of the ordinance, definitions, applications for licenses, basis for approval and denial of license and special permits, standards of conduct, hours of operations, and temporary closures in the interest of public health, safety, and welfare. Does anyone, anyone want to introduce this item?
I'd be happy to.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance being presented to city council for first reading, introduction and first reading. If it is approved this evening, it would come back at a future meeting for second reading and adoption. So this is the first time it's coming before council at a regular meeting. However, as you know, it has been under review and study by city council for probably the last 30, 60 days or so, working through some issues with the ordinance and updating some aspects of the ordinance to address various issues that have come to city council's attention, particularly concerning hookah lounges in the community. There are currently some applications pending for smoking lounges in the city. And in the course of reviewing those, it has come to our attention that certain aspects of the ordinance can also be updated to help address the review and processing of applications. So the description you just read really outlines what is in the ordinance. The, the two key areas of the ordinance that are adjusted relate to the hours of operation. In the draft ordinance would be amended to be 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And the period of time for a temporary closure, if there is a significant police incident at a smoking lounge, would be 72 hour temporary closure, up to 72 hours. Other adjustments to the ordinance relate to establishing a special permit for hookah lounges, for a smoking lounge that includes the use of hookahs as part of the smoking lounge operation to address various issues and public safety concerns that arise in connection with those particular uses, and to, to help provide materials in the applications that are processed at the city and reviewed by the city, as well as standards of conduct at, at smoking lounges. So again, if you do decide to move forward with this, this evening, it will come back one more time, I presume, at city council's next meeting, unless there are other issues that need to be addressed.
Okay. Any questions?
Uh, question?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Joppik, we had some discussion regarding, does this ordinance contain information regarding what we talked about, change in ownership and that person being denied a possible permit because he had some association? Or just because he moved into that location? Does this ordinance deal with that issue there we talked about?
It, it does have that provision still with some language adjustments to address some of the issues that were discussed with city council.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, is there any motion?
I have a.
Oh, yes, please.
Sorry, sorry. Yes. Well, I am not in favor of the ordinance. There are a lot of things that I really like about this ordinance. And as I've perhaps mentioned before, I think some, some of, the majority of information and/or changes to the ordinance, I, I support and agree with. However, I'm having a real problem with the hours of operation. I think it's, I feel that it's not our job to stifle business, but to set up regulations to help a business. And I think that most of the language in this ordinance targets the behavior of the hookah lounges. I know that since 2014, there've been a lot of issues with hookah lounges, the drugs. I've heard all types of things that may go, that may be happening inside the hookah lounges themselves. And I think there are laws in the book that target those behaviors, whether it's selling illegal drugs, or I'd heard that there is also human trafficking, but I haven't seen any information on that. I think the ordinance, with the exception of hours, is a very strong one. And they will help us to regulate and get some of the problems that public safety is having with the hookah lounges. But the hours of operation, closing at 11 o'clock, I have a problem with. Looking around, there isn't a hookah lounge that I'm aware of, according to my research, that closes earlier than midnight. Our ordinance says that they can open up, it can stay open up until 11 o'clock. And I think that's too early. I think if you're a business owner, and the purpose of your business is to make money, and we're asking a business that really caters to younger individuals within our community to close at 11 o'clock, I don't think that is really, I think it's too restrictive. Most, most hookah lounges within our, in our facility closes at 12 or 12:30. Some as late as 1 o'clock. I know prior to this revision, we had discussed this before. And the, it was the many council, most people in the council's opinion that there should be a midnight closure. However, I disagree with that as well. And they really compromised and came up with a compromise to close at 1. But to close earlier than midnight, I think is just too restrictive for a business owner. And that's why I would not support the ordinance as currently written. I think it's too restrictive. And I think it's, there are so many things that in the ordinance that can deter criminal activity. In the ordinance itself, we're requiring cameras throughout the facility except in the restrooms. The owner has to maintain those, that camera footage until for 30 days. The camera footage also looks at or records the activity that is going on outside, outside the establishment itself. There is a requirement that so many managers or a manager has to be on the premise, something, information about loitering outside the establishment. And I think that those are really good provisions in the ordinance. However, the 11 o'clock, 11 o'clock closure, I think is too early for me to support.
Okay. Is there a motion or any further questions?
Yes. I too am not a supporter of this. Until there's education and outreach to the owners of these facilities, businesses, I think that needs to happen first. Because maybe if you outreach and speak with them, or partner with them, collaborate with them, to find out what we can do to help them, what they can do to make these businesses more attractive. They have, they are the new locate, they're the new gathering spot for your 18 to before 21, before you can drink, businesses for a lot of our young, young adults. So we really have to understand what is the barriers to them to having a viable business that is a more encouraging that is more encouraging and more inclusive.
Okay. Yes, Dr. Bruce?
Well, I'm ready to make a motion. I'll make a couple of comments. I think most of these owners don't want any outreach. I think that they've shown through their criminal activity that they are not interested in working with the city. Their out, their behavior has been absolutely outlandish at times. They sell drugs, they have alcohol service in there that's been illegal, they do all kinds of things. There's been shootings, stabbings, so this is not a business entity that wants to work with the city. They want to carry out a lot of very nefarious types of activities instead, and so controlling them, I think, is not going to be the issue. I think trying to put limits on them is going to be the only way we're really going to address the amount of criminal activity that's happening in these businesses, to hopefully put an end to it. So with those comments, I'm going to move the approval of the introduction of an ordinance to amend the Farmington Hills Code of Ordnances at Chapter Eight, Business Licensing, Article Two, Smoking Lounges, to establish a special permit for hookah smoking areas and smoking lounges, and to amend provisions relating to the purpose and intent of the ordinance, definitions, applications for licenses, by a basis for approval and denial of license and special permits, standards of conduct, hours of operation, and temporary closures in the interest of the public health, safety, and welfare.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Dr. Bruce, seconded by Councilmember Knoll. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Bridges?
Thank you. I, I'm torn between this ordinance in regards to supporting it. I had some, we had a lot of discussion about this at a couple sessions about this particular issue, and I acknowledge there are some issues that have occurred at hookah lounges, no question about that. But same time, I don't know if we are arbitrarily singling out a certain business for enforcement of, you know, of police powers being used to police this specific type of business. So I, I'm concerned about that, and I'm also concerned about the fact that, you know, we have stabbings and shootings that could occur anywhere in our city. That could happen at a, in fact, it happened at Shell Gas Station, 12 Mile Orchard Lake. There was a shooting there. We can't outlaw that business because of the fact they had a shooting there. So the point is that, yes, there's been some incidents at hookah lounges, at some hookah lounges, but not all, and so I'm not inclined to support an ordinance that would have broad impact upon all, all hookah lounges in Farmington Hills, because Knoll has experienced these issues, no question about that. Some have, and there has been some issues there that have been very, very, I would say, concerning in regards to police activity being there. But the point is that, you know, we have bars, restaurants in Farmington Hills, I'm sure they have had issues too. Now, I don't know about any shootings or, or stabbings, but the point is, this can happen anywhere. So I'm inclined not to support the ordinance as is currently written. I think we should, definitely should reach out to these businesses to see what we can do to work together to ensure that, that we are on the same page, that they're given a type of notice in regards to how they should, what our expectations are and our standards are, but to single out all hookah lounges in Farmington Hills is being somewhat of a problem. I don't think we should do that, and I'm not comfortable with the fact that some of the discussion we had earlier in regards to penalizing a new owner of a hookah lounge, who had no association with that particular lounge, and may have denied a license because they moved into that location. So I'm, that's another reason why I'm not supportive of that as well. So that's my decision is not to support the ordinance as currently written. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Knoll, and then Dr. Massey.
Sure. Since everyone else is making their comments on it, I guess I will too. So we've had homicides, stabbing, shootings, fighting, stolen vehicles, illegal drugs, narcotics, illegal weapons, all of these incidences have happened at hookah lounges. Granted, yes, they, you know, periodically do happen in other places in the city. The difference is, we have a very high percentage of these type of issues taking place at hookah, hookah lounges. We are not having a high percentage of these incidences happening at other bars, restaurants, gas stations, retail locations, whatever. A high percentage is happening at the hookah lounges, and 75% of them are happening after 10 o'clock at night, and I think it's important to note that because that is the reason why I am supporting requiring them to close at 11 p.m. Quite honestly, I think it will help the hookah lounge owners who actually want to do a good business, because it will help them provide a safe environment. It is not safe when you're having a high percentage of these types of crime, illegal activities happening. And what we have to also remember, it's not just the people that are in the hookah lounges, but when these incidences are going out into the parking lots, all of these facilities, lounges are in strip malls. There are other people shopping at other restaurants or frequenting other types of, you know, bars or restaurants in these strip malls that could be in harm's way. So I actually think this closure is, I think the fact that 75% of these crimes are happening after 10 o'clock at night is, is why I feel comfortable supporting this. I know the police department has tried working with these hookah lounges. They've obviously reached out to them numerous times in all of the, you know, police calls that they've, they've had there, and many of these owners just don't want to work with the police department, because quite honestly, they are complacent in a lot of this illegal activity that's happening. They're part of it, and I'm not just saying that, we've seen that based on some of the evidence, the fact that they have been involved in it based on police investigations. So that is the reason for, for my support of it.
Okay. Dr. Massey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I am going to be supporting this, and I'm, but I'm going to, I'm just going to say that upfront, I'm a little saddened that we have to even be here talking about whether or not we're going to support this, because this is the second ordinance on businesses that were behaving in a way that put our public at risk, and this body's first and foremost job is health, safety, and welfare of our community. We put together a previous ordinance because we, we saw some problems that were involving multiple police calls at hookah lounges, and then there was also the sports and what have you, the golf and sports, that was having a number of fights, and we came together and we put together a business ordinance that said, you need to have increased security, you need to be able to provide a place that people can come together in a safe and clean environment and not be having to call the police all the time. Well, to the point of working with our hookah owners, apparently they didn't receive that message the first time. Subsequently, multiple felonies, double shooting, other fights, and everything else that had been already alluded to by my colleagues, occurred after that, so we needed to look at how do we prevent this. And as a science person, I look at data, and our data says that seven, as correctly stated by Councilman Knoll, 74% of these things are happening after 10 p.m. So in a way, we should be looking at this. If the hookah owners wanted to be good business citizens, they would have been working with us to put the, put these safety precautions in place and ensure that the security of their patrons and the patrons that are around them of other establishments are protected. But instead, there were attempts at cleaning up after a shooting to prevent the police department from being able to actually get in and investigate it and figure out who did this. So their behavior is not even one of, hey, we didn't know about this, it's actually we're trying to cover it up. And let's look at the total, I mean, we may have had five hookah bars at one time, or hookah establishments. We're talking about, there are only two. One's closed because the owners are somewhat incarcerated, they're not able to run their establishment. The other one didn't bother to even adhere to the laws of the state of Michigan and get appropriately licensed. So this is not a huge business sector, and if people want to hang out later, then they shouldn't behave in the manner in which they're behaving. And it's sad, it's a sad state of affairs in our society, we actually have to undergo a bit of parenting. But when, when individuals demonstrate on multiple occasions that they have no interest in considering those other things, then it is our responsibility to put something in that is restrictive. Now, if this works and it takes away the problem, that's great. This also has caveats that if it doesn't, then there can be shutdowns, temporary and/or permanent eventually, if these things continue. If the act, if they, if the business owners actually do participate and clean that up, then there's always a conversation that we can have on that regard. To the point that other incidents happen in other places, yes. My colleague, Mr. Bridges, just mentioned the 12 Mile Orchard Lake Shell. Those were two individuals who were having a fight. The hookah, when we have people going out and shooting indiscriminately at buildings and what have you, it's a very different situation, and these are the types of situations that we're trying to elude. And as far as not being able to get a license just because of an incident happened at that space, it also is because we have evidence, going back to the actual data, that people are changing the ownership names and so forth so that they get around those particular problems. So for all of those things, I'm sad that we have to do this, but I'm very comfortable with doing this at this time, and let's see if this, it's a small segment, it's two businesses that are the bad actors. I don't know what we're getting so stressed about, but we can always come back and revisit ordinances, that is the beauty of them, should things change down the road. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'd like to add something. I really dislike being in a position where we have to regulate the operation of certain businesses, and this is not to say that all hookah lounges are bad. They're not all bad. Ones that we have operating in Farmington Hills, however, are not good. We pride ourselves on being one of the safest cities in the state of Michigan, and that we protect our residents, and we go above and beyond to make sure that everybody is safe in their property and environs, and the fact is, when you're operating on a strip mall where there are residential neighborhoods behind you, bullets don't necessarily find their way simply in the direction that you would hope they would go, and sometimes errantly fly through private neighborhoods, putting people at danger, little kids at danger, and that is not something we want to encourage at all in the city of Farmington Hills. We've had several go rounds with our hookah lounge owners, and they have failed to address the problems that we have brought forward, consuming an inordinate amount of time of police services, which is necessary to protect the residents and other patrons at different venues at those shopping centers and strip malls. This is an unfortunate situation, but when the life, health, safety, and welfare of our general citizenry is at stake, we have to go above and beyond what we normally do in order to protect everybody. And so I am not uncomfortable supporting this iteration of the ordinance at all. I think it's great. I hate to be in a position where we just regulated them and had discussions with these business owners two years ago, a year ago, six months ago, and we still find ourselves in this situation. And when you thought that things were closed during COVID, we still had shootings, we had empty beer bottles, alcohol bottles, rounds of, spent rounds of, of bullet shells left in parking lots, we had several chases down Orchard Lake Road and Northwestern Highway that had to be abandoned because of the dangerous nature of those chases when somebody was exiting a parking lot rather quickly to avoid getting arrested by our police officers for not following the law. The one hookah lounge owner in the city of Farmington Hills that had no violations had a major red flag because they had not applied to the state of Michigan to have a permit for smoking, and in order to be a smoking lounge, you have to follow state law and get a permit from the state. So even they were in violation of state law, although, thank God, we didn't have to chase anybody down there. But this is not a business that has been operating on the straight and narrow and under the, the codes of appropriateness that we expect our businesses to operate under in Farmington Hills, and it is not fair to neighboring businesses to burden them with this kind of dangerous activity. And I am not going to stand by as mayor of this community when we have a good ordinance in front of us and not support protecting our citizenry, our business owners who are operating within the confines of the law, who operate safe and wonderful businesses in order to protect several hookah owners who believe that it's okay to flout the law and engage in illegal activities behind the scenes. So I'm ready to ask for a vote on this, and...
Could I just, could I just make one quick, an observation, just pop, just, I'm sorry, a little light came on, doesn't happen all the time. But in all of these discussions, do you notice who we haven't ever had come up and talked to us? The owners.
Right.
These have all been public hearings, and if they have a problem with what we're doing, excuse me, they're not here, so...
Well, two of them are in jail.
Well, okay, so we give them a pass, but if there was a problem with what it is that we're doing, they either, A, have written us off and don't care, or B, they don't have a problem with this. So I just, it was an observation, I just, looking around, thought, I just wanted to share that thought.
Yes. Thank you. So this is a regular?
Roll call vote.
This is a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Newlin?
No.
Knoll?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Bolowear?
No.
Bridges?
No.
And Mayor Barnett?
Yes.
Passes four to three.
Passes four to three. We will have the enactment, this is just the first reading, so it's the introduction. If you are a hookah lounge owner and would like to contact us or are contemplating opening a legal and kind business in the city of Farmington Hills, we urge you in the next two weeks to get in touch with our city manager, and we would love to hear from you. In which event you don't, I'm probably happy to go to straight enactment in two weeks with this ordinance. That brings us toward the end of the agenda. We have a city attorney report. Does anybody have any questions?
No.
Seeing none. This is, we, before we, I asked for a motion to adjourn, I want to remind everybody that it is budget season. Those of you who have been interested in the budget, we will have public budget hearings on the 16th and the 17th in the evening at City Hall, and we will go through the budget and hopefully enact our budget for the 2022-23 fiscal year beginning in June. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's been ruled by Mr. Bridges, seconded by?
Court.
Dr. Bruce. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Good night, Farmington Hills.